Alright, everybody, we're gonna open the meeting. Can you please stand for the pledges allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the December 2nd, 2024 Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening, myself, Chairman Alan Donlin, our vice-chairman, Mr. Carl Hinger is here tonight. Our secretary, Mr. Elijah Hewling is with us tonight. Regular member commissioner, Mr. Richard Briggs is with us. Regular member commissioner, Mr. Larry Russmire is with us. Alter member commissioner, Mr. Liam Panea is with us. Alter member commissioner, Mr. Michael Barnes is with us this evening. Our very excellent zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lolly is with us this evening. And our always outstanding and, I think, perfectly good Cassandra Varian, our courting secretary, is with us this evening. The current agenda can be found here at the table or on the town website on the board meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the secretary will read into the record any communications we've received in favor or opposed to the application. The chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of this meeting and will deliberate in open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask or indulge us in not reiterating comments previously presented. You are welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the land use office in the morning. Thank you. Okay, first thing on the agenda is a review of the November 4th, 2024 minutes. I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion at all? Very, very low. Any discussion? Looks perfect. Great job, Cassandra. A plus. Thank you very much. Okay, review of correspondence?
We have to vote.
Oh, yeah.
Vote for prison.
Alright, thank you. Going too fast. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Two fives. Alright, continued public hearings. Or anything on the minutes of other boards and commissions? Does anybody have anything? Nothing on wetlands or anything like that? Continued public hearing, there is none. Public hearings, there is none. Old business, there is none. We're gonna move on to new business, and that is our first application. That is Application Z-24-75. That is the Scott and Deborah Taylor residence, 25 Deerfield Road, Brookfield, Connecticut. And I'm gonna read the variance request. And it's basically accessory structure, front yard. That is a three-car detached garage. And the zoning regulation is 3 dot 4 dot alpha dot 3 dot B. For the applicant or proponent of the applicant, come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Matthew Turhardt. Name of my company is Turhardt Builders. I reside at 1405 Larson Drive in Danbury, Connecticut.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals.
Thanks. So my customer is Scott Taylor and Deborah Taylor on 25 Deerfield Road. He has an interior lot. And he has a very large, expensive boat he likes to keep on candlewood. His current garage will not accept this boat. It's too tall, it's too deep. So he has to pay a lot of money every year in certain storage fees because of sensitive equipment on the boat. The weather, the extreme weather will just destroy all the equipment in there. So he would like to put an accessory garage on. The reason I'm here is because it happens to be in the front yard of an interior lot. I believe, off the top of my head, and I can verify, the garage is 350 feet from the road. It does not encroach on any setback lines, wetlands, septic. It's not too close to the lake. There literally is nowhere else on the property to put the garage. Towards the lake, it would end up being too close, plus the grading does not allow for a garage to be put there. The front of the house, because the house doesn't face the street, it faces the side. The front is just a big hill that would require so much blasting, I don't even think it would be possible. And the other side is where the septic is. So there is nowhere to put this. We would be more than happy to accommodate the town by making it an attached structure if that was an option. The problem is, he's got a 35-foot wide driveway, so we would need a 35-foot long breezeway attaching it to the existing home. It's extra costly, and it would actually kind of block views from the lake just to make it so we didn't have a standalone structure.
Would it help you if I brought the GIS up in case you needed to explain anything, sir? That's the map. Would that help you?
Um, I'm...
You're good.
I think, I think I'm, I'm pretty good. This is kind of what we have covered. If there was another alternative, we would obviously explore that versus going through this, this process.
Thank you very much.
Very well.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any correspondence? No last minute? Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Couple.
How tall is the garage?
Um...
Let's see the size. Eight by thirty-two.
Yeah, exactly. So much paperwork, I apologize.
Take your time, sir. Alright, so we are...
Six twenty feet.
Six hundred and twenty?
No, high.
Twenty feet high, is that high, correct? Yes, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Very well.
Well, I have a question. At least based on this, this survey.
Absolutely. Where we're most comfortable with, sir.
Whatever's less disrespectful.
It's not clear, just from looking at it, why the garage could not be attached to the driveway, I mean, to the house, as it, as it comes down to this facing this... I guess this is what, the west-facing side? You know, where the, where the driveway abuts the house. Why could it not be attached there?
Again, that would be where we would be able to put a 35-foot long breezeway. But we'd have to cut up part of the driveway to put footings in for all of that as well, because I can't span 35 feet.
I'm, I'm not sure, why would the breezeway be necessary?
Well, because they say it has to be, in order for it to be in the front yard and not have to go through this process, it would have to be attached to the house.
Right, so my, so I'm not clear why it couldn't be moved and attached to the house, is the question.
That was a question I had as well.
So, in order to, are you referring to like, moving it closer to the house?
I'm saying putting it, make it, making it part of the house, basically.
Cut it perched to it, absolutely. Okay, cool, awesome. So, this drops off significantly down there. So we have no way to put it there. Here, if we were to move it closer, there's no way he can back the boat into the garage. The more, the less space we have here, she's not gonna be able to pull her car out of that garage.
There's a garage there, right?
Correct.
There's already a garage around that side of the house.
And that is where the doors are.
There's already a garage there.
Yes.
That's what I saw.
So there's no way, and that current garage will not accommodate the size of the road, there's nothing you can do.
So if you were to, if the garage, if this garage were here, let's say, like so, then coming down the driveway, you just back into the, into the driveway, into the garage, rather. And then, and then this interior space, which is now a garage, I guess, you'd either have an extended garage with one side accommodating the boat and the other could give you access to this part of the road.
Well...
That's my question.
Yeah, again, so this is roughly 35 feet. The boat itself is 29 feet. The truck that carries it is 18 feet. Roughly, you got another foot in between those. Right?
Right, well, so the...
So where at?
So the, the 29-foot boat sitting on a trailer that's 18 feet. So the, the overall length is, say, 30 feet, giving him, give it a couple, or 30 feet.
Or 40.
Right.
What, 29 and 18 you're talking about?
Exactly, yeah.
Right, so, and that's the length, right?
Yep. Of it all together, and then again, he'd have to, I mean, oh my goodness, putting that... If we move that closer...
You'd have to move the driveway?
It would... I mean, there just wouldn't be room to be able to pack it in there.
No, you'd have to, you'd have to move the driveway and you're sustaining the garage.
Yeah, Mr. Tar... Well, but this, this, this is presumably level here, right? Driveways swing around like that.
Not exactly. This, from that point to that point, drops roughly eight feet.
And drops.
Right.
I have a follow-up question on that, what you just asked. So, and it's a slightly different location. Thank you very much. Please thank the tailors for allowing me to go out and look at it.
Oh, absolutely.
You wanna go next, sir?
Yeah, I had a question.
Okay, I have a follow-up on him.
How did you determine what the front of the property was?
Zoned it.
The road.
How, how was that determined?
Under definitions, front yard.
Right, but the way this go drive, this property goes, it goes down in an angle. And the way the house is situated, the front yard of the house, obviously, is pointing west. And if it were up further, I mean, we're at an angle. I mean, is there a judgment call on whether that's...
I go by the regulations and I ran it through the land use director. An open, a front yard is an open space between the building and the front lot line, extending the lot full of wood.
It faces towards the road, right?
Regardless of which way the house faces.
Right, it's, it's, it's where it's, where it's here. So this, this is determined... So oddly enough, if the driveway was coming in an angle and went down like this, the front yard would still be the south side of the house?
Front yard, yeah.
Okay. That, that was my only question.
I have a question for you, sir. This is a follow-up on Commissioner Briggs's question. Please come forward.
Sure.
Okay, a slightly different location. My, my question is, you have a garage now, and I did go out and look at it. I just wanna go over a couple things on the map real quick.
Sure.
The septic fields are back over here.
Yes.
I went over that with the town, and this is approximately, almost exactly where the septic fields are. So that's no good. Coming back, straight back from this wall, it's roughly a 45-degree slope. It's pretty, it's pretty steep back there. And then just off to the left, which is approximately where, where you wanna put that, I, I mean, it was less. Maybe it's a 20-degree slope, 25-degree slope. It's a little bit less right here. And it gradually gets worse.
Correct.
Going down towards...
Correct.
Okay, so that's fair. So why not take, if it's possible, and I don't know if it's possible or not, and I know you got the rock wall and everything there. I'm not landscaped, I'm a moved dirt.
Yep.
Commissioner Russmire can handle that. But why not take it and move it towards the east, okay? And then you, you're much closer to the house. You have your garage here. It's a much shorter distance. You know, you know where the, I measured this walkway. It's about six feet right there, see my little six-foot mark?
Yeah, yep.
So, okay, so that, that walkway is six feet, and it comes from the edge of the house there, and you got a walkway. So if you bring it over, put it up kind of close to there, and then squared it off, you could even make the driveway bigger so that you can get in here, and you can get in here. But why not take the garage, put it there, and then just... It's a very small, it's six feet of attachment to the house.
So, just a couple issues with that. He wouldn't be able to access for all the vehicles with it that way, because the doors would now be on this way versus that way.
Okay, all the vehicles, you mean?
Exactly, he's coming in like that. So he'd only really be able to get comfortably to in there.
Couldn't you extend the driveway there?
To go around that way?
Yeah, so your driveway now is here to here. Can you just extend the driveway to there?
We...
If you really wanted to be able to come in on that angle? Just trying to see if there's a different option.
Yeah, there's, we have to bring in a substantial amount of fill.
For the back part here, not quite as bad here.
For the back part, in order for the driveway to be level. Another issue I worry about with that is the amount of impervious area, surface area that we're creating is now more. And it already slopes that way. They have a pretty good handle on the way the water comes down the driveway, because this gradually slopes the water. By the time it gets here, it's moving pretty good. So we would rather not reroute it this way to where it goes to neighbor here, and would further go down towards the lake.
But besides turning, having the doors that way and making the doors this way, it's possible to move it a little closer and only need... I'm measuring six, maybe it's an eight-foot little breezeway with a roof on it that you would need.
Theoretically, I would say it is possible. But again, we have those issues I brought up. He also has, I believe that's where his leader is right there. He's got all the underground electrical that comes from the street to the house going right there, which would all have to get rerouted.
Alright, my next question is, could you explain the, the unique hardships of the property in detail for me?
Yeah, well, the front, when I say front, I mean where the front door is. It cannot be...
Which is on the west.
Correct, the west. It cannot be put there. It's, you saw the hill, it's not possible. The other areas are where the septic is, which it can't go there.
Yeah, that's the north and east.
Yep, it can't go there. Where you had proposed as a possibility, it's a lot more difficult to do it there. It's gonna cost more. It's not his ideal setup to begin with, and it does block a view of the lake.
It's kind of tough, because they put the front door of the house facing west.
I know, it's one of those things where it's like, mm, so... But again, on top of the boat, he can, he'd love to be able to sort the boat in the original garage. But he just can't, because it's too tall and too deep. He also has lawn equipment, tractors, trailers, stuff like that. He doesn't want to leave out in the front yard.
I'm talking about, like, hardships of the land, sir. That's, like, specific, that's, that was my question.
Okay. The hardships. What do you, the hardships of the land are, there is nowhere else to put the garage. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yeah.
This retaining wall on the backside of the house?
Yep.
Do you know what the elevation drop is from the blacktop to the top of that retaining wall?
It's gonna be at least 10 feet. At least, because I believe that's actually a tiered rotating wall.
Yeah, I was gonna say about...
There's two sections to it.
Yes, exactly.
Upper section. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any plans to have any livable space in this garage? Or is it strictly garage?
Strictly garage, no livable space.
So if we approve, you or the owner would not have any issue with us stipulating this garage?
Not at all, not at all. In fact, the only reason we have access to the attic here is because it's required to, because of the modest square foot. Without, we wouldn't even have access.
I just wanted to state one more thing for the record. I checked with land use, just with the neighbors around there, and 1923, 24, 26, 28, 30, 32, Deerfield, do not have any variances on file. And the other two that are attached to property there, touch it, are 84, 86, and 88 Riverford. There are no variances on file for that. I just wanted to state that for the record, so you knew that, sir.
Okay, what were those numbers in Deerfield, if you don't mind?
19, 23, 24, 26, 28, 30, and 32 do not have any variances on file. Or 84, 86, and 88 Riverford.
Okay, alright. I have a list of some other properties in that neighborhood that have an accessory structure detached in the front yard as well.
I just did all the ones that touched anywhere around the property.
Sure, sure, absolutely, yep.
You can state them for a record if you want to.
Sure, so 57 Riverford, 10 Falls Drive is a very large one, right up on the street. 34 Deerfield, which is right next door to him. He has an accessory structure garage in his front yard, as does 15 Cove Road, 19 Cove Road, 15 Deerfield.
Thank you very much.
Very well.
Anybody else have any further questions for the applicant? At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. So you have a final concluding remarks, and say whatever you'd like.
Um, I'm sure Scott and Deborah would love to be here to speak on their behalf as well, but they're currently in Florida, so they have me here representing them. Yeah, this is something we very much look forward to being able to get done, hopefully. And like I said, very expensive boat, these service charges and stuff like that constantly. He really wants to keep his property, would be nice to not keep trailers or equipment, stuff like that out. He also has multiple, it's just more nicer property. You can't pull that out of the garage, you would make that really hard.
Thank you, sir. That's really it. Thank you very much. You're very welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z-24-75. Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Okay, we don't have any other applications. So what we're gonna do now, I'll explain it to you. We're gonna go into closed deliberations. Basically, discuss the application amongst ourselves. We'll come to the decision this evening. And we ask you, please, not to chime in during discussion.
Sure.
Thank you very much, sir. You can do whatever you'd like.
Oh, he says close, so I just assumed.
No, 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 you can sit here.
Okay. Very good.
Just means we can't hear from the public.
Got it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Alright. I would like to take a motion to approve Application Z-24-75. Do I have a second? Discussion.
Doug, I mean, I, I think it was pretty in-depth of why the other, there's not gonna be any other spot on the property where it could work. In this case as well, it is, I think we have to remember, very far in from the road, not really visible from the road inside. So I don't see a negatively impacted, any property damage surrounding here.
That worked, it worked.
Right, yeah. It's really far. I, I don't see this having any maybe problematic issues. And it's within the setbacks. Even if you could put it on the west side, you'd be suddenly into the setback because of how close the house is up there. So anything on that side is just not gonna work at all. I, I, maybe there's some way you could make, what you suggested work, Alan?
I think there's a way. I was gonna let everybody else speak first. Anybody else have, no?
I agree with Carl for the most part. I think there are hardships. And I also think that it's not, like, it's absolutely necessary. There are other ways for the boat to be stored. There's an existing garage, things like that. But, all that being said, I think the hardships of the topography and just the way that the house sits on the topography. I understand your suggestion, but to me, it's not really green. It's still technically gonna be the front yard. Only thing is now, it's a shorter breezeway. I don't, I understand then that technically makes it conform, but for me, the spirit of, of the law is a little different. So if, if we say, move it this way and then add, change the driveway, we're shifting it 10, 20 feet, but it's still technically in the front yard to just now officially connect to the house.
Because it's got a breezeway, right.
I don't, for me, that's not, that's not moving the needle.
Yeah, I, I agree with Elijah. I think that's a little cutesy, I guess, with trying to...
Make it work.
Make it work, and it's still technically in the front yard. And you say, oh, but now we can attach a breezeway. And I think that's, you're, you're just trying to narrowly fit it in. And realistically, you're still having the same issue. You do have an accessory structure in the front yard.
My only thing, like, I, like I asked, was, I would just stipulate that it's a garage, only no livable space. Because something that size, again, like Larry always says, if we decide to grant, if we decide to grant this, it stays with the, stays with the land. And that's, you know, that's, that's a pretty big, pretty big structure.
Commissioner Russmire?
I, I apologize to my other commissioners. I just, I don't see the hardship. I think it's self-imposed. And I know there are options as far as placement of the structure on the property. So I would be opposed.
I didn't, oh, sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I apologize. I, I, I think that there, it's a self-imposed hardship. And I think that there are other options on the property to move the building. So for those reasons, I would be opposed.
I, I have a, and this isn't about this necessarily specifically, but I have something of a dilemma about this question of hardship. We, we turned down a application for a three-car garage last meeting. The situation was somewhat different, but not entirely different either. Some of it was based on the appearance of the garage and other factors. For me, this, this concept of a hardship, it's a, it's a, it's an interaction between what somebody wants and what the land permits. So it's never without a question of what the person wants, right? So, so, so we define it as a reasonable desire, on the one hand, and what the land itself permits. So then I come to the question, is it a reasonable desire to house a 30-foot boat on your property? I mean, most people don't. But there's nothing wrong with doing it, but, but, and so, you know, boats can be indoor storage at a marina, they can be in other places. There are other options. I know something about boats. I've been involved with them, and I know that, you know, you can store any boat outside. You know, it doesn't, doesn't harm the electronics if the boat is properly covered and so forth. So, you know, on the one hand, I don't have a problem with this So, you know, on the one hand, I don't have a problem with this because of the features we're talking about, and the fact that it's such a distance from the road, and so nobody's, it's not gonna be troubling to anybody most likely. But I do have some concern about this other side of it, the reasonableness of the reason. So, so I might, I might incline more toward Larry's reaction, but I'm sort of divided though about it.
Yeah, I see it, I, I could go either way on this, because I think that there are some hardships on the property. It's definitely a unique shape of property, it's like an extended-arm Oklahoma. They, they put the front of the house facing west, so it kind of, you know, stuck them with how they had to do everything in there. You definitely can't do anything, we went over it before, the, the north and eastern side has got the septic fields there. There's not enough room, if he was gonna do it in, on that side of the house, the front is really here and everything over. And, and there is, there is a topography issue, you know, he's got a forty-five degree slope back over here, and I think it's twenty-five to thirty degrees, it's a little less on the right-hand side when you come down the driveway there. So he does have some topography issues, especially going down towards the lake, so I could go either way on it. I think the self-imposed part is really the location-wise where he decided to do it. I think that there are options, and I know it may not be what they want, you know, moving a little bit closer to the house and putting a smaller catch breezeway. So I'm just not sure on this, I can go either way. I'd like, I'd like to hear some more from Commissioner Rushmore if I could, please.
I, I just, I apologize, I, I don't see the hardship, I just don't see the hardship.
You don't see a problem with the topography?
It's a thirty-foot boat, you can put it in storage, it's, and then there are other options about if you wanted to put the structure and make it more compliant, I could possibly move a little bit, but the topography doesn't affect the, the construction side of this.
There's always a way to work.
There's always a way to work it on the construction side of this, so I apologize.
Would you be opposed to, we don't know what everybody's gonna do, but if we did happen to deny it, denying it without prejudice, so we could come back and tweak and change something and come back in thirty days versus six months?
That'd be fine, sure.
How are the other commissioners feeling? Do you wanna follow up on anything? Mr. Rushmore?
Yeah, I mean, there's
I see both sides.
Yeah, it is, it is difficult.
Yeah, it is difficult. I think there's options to move it a little bit closer, still be able to use it the way he wants.
You could attach it to the house.
Yeah, and attach it to the house with a six or eight foot, you know, and that, and the proposed location I had, which is the kind of south and east section of the property, I think it's, I think it's doable with a little short one, it's not a thirty-five-foot breezeway, but I think that there's options on it.
I still think that the topography and the shape of the property, and the, whether it's the leaching fields and whatnot, all constitute an effective hardship to grant a variance in this case. I, I know, like you said, that they're like, okay, well, does a person really need a three-car garage? And in reference to the last meeting, that didn't really have a topography issue so much, it was just he didn't feel like putting it, and he could fit it very clearly in his backyard, he just didn't feel like putting it.
He had about eleven feet, I think.
Right, he just didn't feel like putting it where he wanted to, so that was less an issue. There, there wasn't really a physical hardship, that was just more of an aesthetic thing. In this case, obviously, we don't have aesthetic, aesthetic issues with the neighbors, because it's so far removed, removed from the road already. I mean, it's bare, it is technically a front yard, yes, but it is barely a front yard in regards to where it's located, I mean.
I know, I asked Land Use Department, I thought the rear of the house was like if you drew a line here, but it's technically not. It's everything here forward is the front yard.
Right.
It's just tough the way they laid out the house.
Yeah, if the house had been built at a slightly different angle, it's only no longer a front yard, it's a side yard. So given that it's nowhere near the road and not gonna affect anyone else, I don't see a reason why he shouldn't be able to build a three-car garage in this instance, because even if it, again, we could argue all day of, well, how, how many garages should a person have, or how big should they be? But in this case, because it's not negatively affecting anyone, I think that's more up to the owner and their needs. This, that's not a infringing on anyone else. You know, if you need a three-car garage to store your boat because you live on the lake, then so be it, you know?
I, do you have any follow-up on that? I, I tend to lean towards Commissioner Braxton, Commissioner Rushmore, just for the fact that I think that there are options, and he did agree, hey, that is a possible option, move it over there. If he didn't agree on it, then I would think about it probably differently, but I think that he does have an option on it. I think he can attach it with a much smaller one, so I'd be inclined to probably disapprove of it, but I'd like to, if we did happen to, maybe do it without prejudice, so he could, just in case he needed something, come back sooner than, rather than six months, if anybody has an issue with that. Is there any further discussion?
I mean, what Carl's saying makes a lot of sense, and I get somewhat, well, I don't know, time out, but the question of precedent, you know, I, I mean, this, it makes, you know, it's practical, it isn't causing anybody any problem, obviously, but, but then I think about the precedent issue of, you know.
Somebody else comes around us and says, hey, I've got plenty of room, three hundred and fifty feet off.
No, no decisions create precedence, each one is a case on itself. So we don't set precedents, we evaluate the property, and we make decisions based on the rules, regulations of the zoning for the property.
Right, well, I guess
And the hardship, if there is one.
If there is.
I mean, but can, can we question that in terms of the, the particular nature of what, what we deem a hardship? I mean, if, if, if there isn't a consistency, but maybe that's not a reasonable concern, I don't know. I'm on the fence enough about, I would sort of say, well, if it could be denied without prejudice with the option, that if they, if they aren't able to come up with a more compliant answer, then we would, we could reserve the option of approving this at a later point. In other words, if we, if we deny it, now does that mean it's denied forever?
Six months. It would have to be something, correct Fran, something substantially different, but six months.
Six months, yeah.
That's a normal denial, but deny without prejudice, it could be thirty days, tweak, they change something, they can come back.
Yeah, and if, and if they looked at it and still haven't found a way to do it, could we then say, well, okay?
And then it says, I would say what Larry said, that there's always a way. It's just a matter of how much are you willing to pay? Because I, I mean, I agree with Larry, I'm, I'm sure there is a way that you could shift it and do
Yeah, they could shift it there, they could do some, bring some fill-in, Larry knows better than man, attach a six-foot, eight-foot.
Okay, but see, like, if we're going off of your suggestion, Alan, we don't mean to deny without prejudice, because by your suggestion, they wouldn't need to come back anyway, your way is in compliance. And if they're changing nothing at all, then is that really going?
Might as well decide now.
Might as well decide now, who's to say?
I see what you're saying.
Okay, we deny without, without prejudice, how do we gauge how hard they work this next month? Like, are, do they actually consider it, or do they just sit there for a month and just say, oh, we thought about it, we, like, try it again?
I would a hundred, I would a hundred percent agree with you, except Mr. Tar said it was an option. If he, if he had said, no, no, it's not an option, we can't do it for this guy, then I would, I totally agree with you.
But is it really an option, or is it an option like Elijah said, where everything is technically an option if you're willing to tear form the property?
I have to respect what he said.
He said that it was an option, because again, like I said, obviously, there's, almost anything can be an option. But I think he also pointed out that drainage could be an issue, that once you start getting back there, where you're pushing the proposed garage right now, you come up with topography issues. If you start moving that water that's coming down, how much is that erosion affecting? Again, like Larry said, there's ways to deal with all of that and build it up and backfill.
I think he said the needle was over there.
It can be designed with an engineer in mind, and you can do purbius services, you can do all kinds of things to mitigate the runoff. So again, it's just a matter of getting the right people involved to make the project work.
So you're thinking up or down?
Like, I don't see the reason to just push it off a month and have the same thing come back before us again. I mean, like I said, I'm in favor of the application, I think that there's enough issues with the property that what they're requesting makes sense, I just don't see a reason to go the whole route of without prejudice and then let, come back with the exact same plan in a month.
Or they don't come back at all because they attach it to the house.
Because they make it work the way you suggested, I don't, but let's just maybe wanna deny without prejudice, that's your, that's your choice.
Anything further, sir?
Well, I understand what you're saying, and maybe what I was suggesting was just a way to allow myself to continue to be on the fence, but
Sure.
Anyway.
You ready to vote, sir?
Yeah.
You ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
You ready to vote, sir?
All right. All those in favor of approving application Z dash twenty-four dash seventy-five? And that is for a three-car detached garage, which is in the front yard. The zoning regulation is three dot four dot alpha dot three dot B, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay. Is that nay?
No.
Okay, so the motion fails two to three, right? Thank you very much, sir, have a good evening.
So is that with or without prejudice?
That's just denied.
It's, so denied with or without?
I guess you guys can discuss.
You want me to do it?
I mean, I would, personally would say without prejudice, just we can
Fran, do you mind if we redo the vote one more time on that?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Let me, let me run through it one more time. Okay. All those in favor of approving application Z dash twenty-four dash seventy-five? And that is the Scott Taylor residence, and that is for a construct three-car detached garage, that's in the front yard. That's zoning regulation three dot four dot alpha dot three dot B, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no, nay, without prejudice? Without prejudice, okay, so the motion fails, it's two to three, and it's a nay without prejudice. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Lawley can explain that to you. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
It is too late to point out that, and I, I'm prepared, because now if we do it the other way, it now puts it too close to the lake, so we can't get approval. I apologize, as I sat down, I said, oh, that's my hardship.
Mr. or Ms. Lawley can help you out with anything.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, moving on, table items none. And our next is informal discussion, I do believe we have Chairwoman Fox here with us, we've all been waiting.
Live and in person.
Yeah, additional wetlands and water course one-on-one training, that's what I call it, by our excellent Chairwoman Sharon Fox.
Can I request a five-minute bathroom break?
Absolutely, you would like to?
Would you like to make a vote on that, or can we?
No, yeah, we have to. Take a motion?
I'll take a motion.
Oh, yeah, he can just
You can go.
Yeah, you can go.
Yeah, informal.
Yeah, just go ahead, we're informal. We don't need to vote on that. Go forward, man, say hi. We've been waiting for you.
Well, I said hopefully I can be of some, you know, some help.
Thank you very much.
What can I do for you is really the question.
Well, I know, I'm a novice.
First, I'm impressed, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of you, I mean, the wetlands, as you probably know.
Thank you very much.
Both people will stay on wetlands, so you must be running with the commission better than anyone else.
We watched a couple of meetings of yours, I've watched a few of them, but I know I'm a novice, and we all, we all need help on wetlands training.
Well, I don't, I said, I, just a couple of, yeah, a couple of things. First, I mean, I don't purport to be, you know, the expert, you know, on all the state regulations. Second, whatever I speak, of course, I have to speak for myself, you know, not, not for the commission. I really didn't know how to prepare, I said, I'll take questions, like maybe started off when I was on zoning. I had absolutely no idea about wetlands worth, absolutely no idea. We waited for their opinion, and they did great things, that's about all I knew. Getting on wetlands has been great, you know, the wetlands
How long you been doing it now, now?
What's that?
How long you been doing it now?
Been on wetlands since 2010, I was on zoning from ninety-seven to 2010, I think even term limits.
You know a lot more, you know a lot more about wetlands than we do.
So you made, one of the things that I had no idea on is I think most of you have the zoning regulations in front of you, and they're what, an inch and a quarter? The wetlands regulations from the state are about that thick, that's about three pages. And this is the wetlands regulations for the town of Brookfield. It is primarily, primarily taken from a set of wording and documentation that was provided by the state back in the early nineties, I think. They haven't updated it very much. So it is nowhere near as prescriptive, you know, as it is in zoning. There is, there are very few thou shalt be twelve and a half inches from, you know, a wetlands or a water course, there's nothing like that.
Wetlands is needed per Connecticut general statutes in every single town in the state, is that correct?
Um, I think every, the wetland statutes in Connecticut came into force in the early eighties, I think, as a state regulation. And then they allowed the individual towns to determine how they wanted to implement the, you know, the wetlands commissions. I understand every town has a wetlands commission, and Brookfield, as I understand, you know, jumped right on it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, in the early eighties, so as soon as they were given the opportunity to form a commission, they did. We are not, to get on the commission is not a matter of voting, you know, you're appointed by the selectmen. I don't think there's a minority rule, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, but I don't think you have to have a certain number of Democrats and a certain number of Republicans. The commission size is the same, five regulars and, and three alternates. So, so like I said, I believe every town, now, some of them I think vote the members in, some of them I think, or the rest of them I think are, are appointed. So other than that, it's very similar, you know, we run the commission just like you guys do, you know, it's a meeting, regular members vote, alternates when the regulars aren't there to make a quorum, so there's a lot of, a lot of similarities. But, you know, most of the meetings are, you know, we don't have that many, recently we've had a lot of violations. You know, mostly people cutting trees down, depositing stuff in wetlands. We don't see anywhere near the number of violations that poor Fran has to deal with, you know, behind zoning. Although recently we've had a lot of people cut trees, so we had like seven of them, it was like, oh my God, it took like an hour to get through them. So, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
I know I went someplace.
Yeah, I know.
What else can I tell you guys, otherwise I can chit chat and see where we go? What was it you guys wanted to know?
I've been curious to ask about pre-existing structures that were built near wetlands before those wetland laws came into effect. Because I live not far from the Hopbrook Swamp and the Long Meadow Road, and there's all those houses.
With Hopbrook going through my house.
If you have, because I understand that there's like a certain, you know, foot limit that you can be within the inland wetlands review and all those things. If you have a property that's right next to the inland wetlands, and you wanna put a shed close to it, but the property was built a hundred years before there were wetlands laws, is, is there some sort of grandfathering in or looking at pre-existing, because we look at pre-existing, like, forming things sometimes?
I would say probably not in the same way. In Brookfield, there are, there are a lot of wetlands, a lot of them are in really good shape, a lot of them are built, you know, and particularly like the Finnell Rapids, that neighborhood, there's a lot of big wetlands in there. There's a big huge wetland that runs along Candlewood Lake Road, but there's a lot of filling there, but you'll see the wetlands on the backside. The street I live off of, Merlin Brook Road
Down one thirty-three.
Yeah, yeah, Merlin Brook Road is filled with wetlands, there's all the wetlands that comes off of, you know, the horse that ran, and then runs into a couple of little drainage courses, like Golden and Northern Brook. So there are a lot of homes, particularly pre nineteen eighty-four-ish, that wetlands wasn't a consideration, and the house was built. We don't think about, we don't, the state doesn't, doesn't give us the opportunity to think about grandfathering. So every application is, stands on its own merit, and we get involved, wetlands gets involved from the state, if the activity is either in a wetland, or in a water course, or
In a lake. That's currently designated.
Yeah, or, and we also look at anything that happens within what they call, the correct term is open review area. Some people will call it a buffer area, but the correct term is an open review area. So any activity that is in seventy-five feet of a wetland, a hundred feet of a water course, or two hundred feet of the lake, Candlewood Lake or Lake Lil Anona, requires a wetlands permit. So if a home was built, you know, some of them are built in, in wetlands, come to find out, and there's a new, there's a couple things going on there all I can talk about, and they wanted to add a garage, and that would be in the open review area. The commission will look at that just for the impact to the wetland or the water course or the lake. So there's no grandfather, you know, that we get to think about. One of the, one of the cool things about, one of the troublesome things about wetlands, they're defined by the state of Connecticut by soil types. There are probably fifty different soil types that you will find in the state of Connecticut, everything from beach sand and sand to muckety-muck. Everything from beach sand and sand to muckety-muck stuff. And that you can pick up with your hands and of course, trims. A number of them are what they call model soils, where there's evidence of water. That's what defines a wetland in Connecticut. It's not the plants, and it's not whether there's standing water there or not. Connecticut soil scientist who really has a bachelor's degree and probably thirty-some odd credits related to soil is the person that the state of Connecticut would grant a license to. So they're all licensed, Connecticut licensed soil scientists. They're the ones that determine exactly where the wetlands are. You contract with them, they come out with a shovel and, you know, a coring device, and they wander around the property, they use their eyeballs and their judgment, dig holes, pull the soil out, map it to a chart, and then that identifies if it's a wetland soil. It was about eight different wetlands, or something like that. It's not a perk test. Well, and sometimes you get in conversation to the people, well, they say, well, guy was out and he dug a hole and threw the water and everything was fine. No, 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 that's something entirely different. So a lot of people don't have a great degree of experience with wetlands, that's what I'm saying. So sometimes you get, you have to help them understand the differences there. Water courses are defined by the state, there's water courses where there's water pretty much all the time, and then there's different ones called.
I have a question on that.
Intermittent water courses. And there's a definition for intermittent water course, where there's a channel, where there's some water that does run, and I can probably look it up. So there's different kinds of water courses as well. And again, us, we can use definitions, and we can also rely on the soil scientists to help us identify, or the applicant identify where the wetlands, water courses boundaries are.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
All right, so we had, we had an application in front of us a couple of years ago, I think it was seven thirty-one Federal, but the river's behind there. How do you guys, how do you guys take into consideration the hundred-year floodline? You know, when they're setting a building and stuff, they say, okay, if we have a bad flood here within a hundred years, the water could come up to this. How do you take that into consideration?
Well, again, I can't speak for the commissioners, I can't speak for the commission, I can just speak for myself. We, as in wetlands, are not bound by flood, flood zones. Zoning is, zoning has to worry about FEMA flood, one hundred fifty, whatever. We don't. We only care about that upland review area from the river, which would be a hundred feet. We do worry about it a little bit because it can impact stormwater management. So we do get involved with stormwater management, because many of the, many of the projects will actually try and, you know, send the water into a river, or send it into a water course, or send it into the lake. So part of the stormwater, stormwater management process thinks about where the flood, you know, where the flood, where the floodlines would be. So you wouldn't necessarily want, I mean, but you can't put like a detention basin, right, to deal with roof, you know, roof runoff, or gutter runoff, or parking lot runoff. You can have that in a flood plain, because by then it's flooded, so.
Grace Bridge Road.
Grace Bridge Road, right. Yeah, that one was, that one was a bit of a challenge, that was a really hard one.
The new storage building.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was a hard one. So they've had some challenges, and I think they had to shore up that detention, you know, that detention area.
Yeah, can you define a detention pond? I guess it's someplace so that the water doesn't hit the building, it can hold it over here, is that what?
Yeah, that's, it's not a wetlands term, that's just a stormwater management term, you know. Trying to prevent just any water going, you know, into a wetland or into a water course, a detention basin would hold the water. They would, they usually dig a hole, like they do, you know, like it did over on, on Grace Bridge, dig a hole, and the parking lot runoff or, which is dirty water, and the roof water, which is mostly clean, not entirely, or footing drains would go into that detention basin. The challenge would be then the water would stay there long enough for any.
Sediment.
Sediment pollution to settle down there. So then when it did overflow, which is part of the process, it will overflow clean water to, into the lake or into the.
And so footing drain runoff is clean water, correct?
I'm not a stormwater management expert, I'm not. My understanding is most, if that water is just coming from the soil and it's never been exposed, then it just has the normal pollutants in it, you know, whatever that is, manganese or PFAs, I don't know. So footing drains, when we get involved with those, because we see them a lot sometimes in homes, it's a matter of how they, how they, how they daylight, right? Can we daylight them into, how close are they going to be to a wetland? Can we move them back so we make sure that even if there's an enormous amount of water coming out of a footing drain, if you scour, you know, that area, now you can take soil into the wetland or the water course, and that, at least I, you know, want to have a design that precludes that. So sometimes we'll ask about sizing for that. A lot of people have taken up the, you know, the idea of rain gardens. So, because riprap, whatever the size is, a nuisance to try and maintain. You can't throw one more over it and weed whackers and blah, blah, blah. So, but rain gardens are getting a lot of appeal, and there's a lot of design options you can get from UConn or DDP that will tell you about, they don't size it for you. You need a little bit of an engineering room to decide if it's got to be thirty feet big or two feet deep or whatever.
Right.
But they'll give you a lot of good ideas, and that's the same thing. Not only it can provide habitat to insects and pollinators, which are on the decline, but it can also settle any pollutants there and keep them out of the lake. So there's a lot of people are doing, you know, development on the lake, and almost every project on the lake is, is within two hundred feet of the lake, so we see everything. A lot of people are doing that.
I have another question. You have a question? Oh, yeah. Okay, I've watched a few meetings over the years and stuff, and some of it I understood, some I totally completely didn't understand. But a lot of times when, and just asking your opinion, not in the wetlands opinion. People are building a building, let's say, they're building a building, and there's, there's a hundred square feet of wetlands there, and they come in front of you and they say, hey.
It's a funny cheer.
Can we, can we, can we fill this hundred square feet of wetlands in, but we're going to give you twelve hundred square feet of wetlands over there? Do you consider that, and I just wanted your personal opinion on it, is that a self-imposed hardship of what they're asking you? And it's, it's a fair stipulation if they wanted to increase or basically give you ten times or twelve times what the wetlands is? How do you figure that out?
There is no state regulation to sort of specifying a, you know, a quid pro quo for that. There's nothing there. So there is no standard of, yeah, you can fill in a wetland if you create, you know, X number of times of, of wetlands. So anything that you hear in that conversation is not related to a, you know, a regulation that we have or something that was designed by the state. I, when I look at it, I'm very aware, because there's a lot of, a lot of articles out there that will say, wetlands creation, recreation is not a certainty.
Oh.
It's not a certainty. If there was supposed to be a wetland over there, Mother Nature would have put it there.
What are the soils in that area that you're going to move this wetlands to?
Well, that's part of the conversation, you know, that, that you get involved with. And then you get the soil scientist saying, well, where's the water going to come from for this? And are you going to replace the soils, and how do you know that's going to work? So the reality is.
You don't know, yeah.
You want to avoid that. That is to be avoided, if at all possible. So if someone comes in and says, look, we got this beautiful building, and we want to fill, you know, ten thousand square feet of oil lines, or we're going to create fifty over here, I would say, let's look at that property, let's see if we, if you can still develop it, right? And it's not a taking.
Maybe it'd be smaller.
And not fill in the well, and whatever Mother Nature put there, that's what we want to try and protect. She knows best. She knows where the wetlands are coming from, she knows where the water's coming from, she knows best. So let's not fill the wetlands. Or let's not fill a creek. Let's not just put a pipe in a creek. So we do have to try and avoid that. Where we have, where the commission has done that is where that property, there's two, two, I can think of the last fourteen years, two scenarios where it happens. The lot was divided, was created, so that the only way in is over a wetland. And even that doesn't mean you have to fill it, because there are things like bridges, there are things like open box culverts, there are a lot of engineering techniques that will essentially be a de minimis impact on the wetlands. So I cannot think, with one tiny little exception, where we said, okay, that lot, the only way in is through a wetland, so yeah, go ahead and fill it.
Can you stipulate in, in approval, like if they want to put in a culvert that's, that's, you know, can get eroded over time and, and cause the road to cave in, can you stipulate that, no, that shouldn't be the engineering technique used? And, you know, something else used, like a small bridge?
Yes. Yeah, and we, we rely on, I mean, most of the engineers around here are actually, you know, very thoughtful. You know, people who look at them are all very thoughtful. So we would, on our own, we would find things like best practices for, these are my things, right? I'm trying to get one, but I never find it. Yeah, like we would, like wetlands creation and restoration is something that we would look at. I'm not going to find my little thing about best practices for, oh, here we are, for wetlands crossings. So, yeah, things like culverts are to be avoided because they rust. And secondly, they, it's very difficult, particularly now that we're getting these like five-inch reins, these deluges, to size them correctly.
Yeah.
So an engineer would size them, not, you know, not us. So we would rely on, on that, or, and an engineering firm to look at things like an open bottom crossing. So that is one, that's what we see. We don't see that many of them anymore, because most of the properties in Brookfield are developed to some extent, so whatever wetlands impact there was to get across it has already happened, but we did, we had it. I can think of three. And every single time where there was either a little bit of filling or a wetlands crossing, and there was impact, we looked at that property and say, can you try and create a wetland adjacent to an existing wetland? Because then the probably, then probably the hydrology will work, and the plantings will work. And this commission has used a kind of a rule of four to one, because, and there's some science to that,
You want to fill in four hundred, we need twelve hundred.
Yeah, it's.
Or sixteen, thank you.
From a couple of little articles that we have found, you know. Yeah, either from the state of Connecticut, or, you know, Vermont, or whatever, I mean, something that's.
I have the other one in my head, a hundred square foot one.
Something that's, that's local. These are very difficult, you know, and you want them to work, but five years from now, you don't know. We can set up reporting, we can put, and we usually do put bonds associated with the plantings that are in a wetlands creation area. We ask for monitoring.
For X amount of years?
For X, usually, yeah, depending how big it is, usually three, four, five years. So that's one example. We had another example where the property needed some access to the back of the building. It was, the building had put, had been put together, had been built back in the thirties or the forties, and there wasn't good fire access to the back. So to, to create a safe situation in the back of that building, because safety is paramount here, we allowed them to fill wetlands. It wasn't high-quality wetlands, because there's a little bit of, I mean, a wetland is a wetland is a wetland, but if you're going to ease off on a little bit, you want to have something that maybe has already been disturbed, you know, and not in great shape. So I think they filled in about a thousand square feet, and we had them create four thousand square feet of wetlands. And then there's the school. The school has, to do the school, they, that property is full of the original wetlands, because there's that whole area down Candlewood Lake Road is a wetland, and there's the Westbrook that runs through there. But when the school was put in and wherever it was, there was a lot of filling of wetlands. The Bowfield, if you know, is, is all wetland soil is over there. That's why it was very wet when it played.
I remember.
Big surprise. So to get the school to where they wanted it, and the challenges they had of where the school, originally, the original school, and then trying to get it in the back, they actually needed to fill, I think it was three hundred and fifty square feet of a disturbed wetland. So the, the town actually created more wetlands, about twelve hundred square feet of wetlands on the far northeast side.
Is that wetlands doing good now?
Well, we don't know yet, to be candid, because they haven't, I don't think they finished the work back there. So we're actually, it's one of our agenda items, you'll see, is that particular, that particular application, we're waiting for them to let us know, did you create the wetlands as you thought you were going to be able to, which is, or did you have to make some changes once you actually got there and saw that, you know? So we're actually waiting for them to tell us, how did that creation actually go? So other than that, I mean, most people, I will tell you, most people want to try and do the right thing. And if they inadvertently bring in a project, you know, where they're filling in wetlands, we have a conversation with them. And most people can find a way to change the design, you know, and not only preserve the wetland, but, you know, all with the, with the temperatures warming, and maybe some drier periods. One of the things that the, that all the literature is talking about, you need, if you, if a wetland has shade now or a water course has shade, that's important. We want to try and maintain the shade on wetlands so they don't dry out. Or if there's ever been there, you know, fish or lizard or turtle, you know, suddenly isn't subjected to, you know, to the sun. And most, most people can find a way to, to make sure the wetlands remain, or the water course remains shaded, and we will see, we do see changes in the, you know, in these designs.
I have one final question I have, and I'll, I'll stop asking. But we all have our own opinions on why wetlands are important to not just Brookfield, but the state of Connecticut. And I know I don't have the exact figures, but I looked it up once ago, but it's gone down a lot over like the last thirty years to now, you know, the amount of wetlands that there is in Connecticut.
Really the last three hundred years.
It's been.
Yeah, across the United States, it's over fifty percent have either been filled or destroyed.
That's the number.
Look at the railroad, where does the railroad usually work? Right along rivers?
Right, yeah.
Right through swamps?
Yeah.
Flatest, easiest course for the train, so.
Yeah, and you'll, you'll see along that track, there's a bunch of wetlands there, particularly on the east side where the water gets it pounded, on, on the east side of that track.
Danbury Fair Mall?
It's, what's that?
Danbury Fair Mall.
The Danbury Fair Mall. Big surprise.
I just want to know what, well, we all have our reasons behind it, but what, in your opinion, is the biggest reason to take care of and be good to wetlands?
Well, I don't think there's one reason, I mean, there's a lot of them, I mean, the number. I mean, an important human consideration is those wetlands provide a function to clean water, you know, to filter the water before it ends up in, you know, in the Housatonic, and then ends up, you know, or wherever it is, ends up in your well or ends up in the lake. So that is one consideration for, for wetlands. The second is, of course, it provides habitat, you know, for, you know, for wildlife, including things like pollinators. You know, people can say, well, maybe you don't need a coyote, but you need bees, you know? And frankly, you need mosquitoes, because they're, they're pollinators as well. So there's, you know, animal and plant habitat, reasons to maintain, to maintain wetlands. Plus, you know, we don't get involved in water tables or aquifers, that's zoning. We just worry about things that are above the ground, not below. You know, still, those, a water course or a wetland can provide hydraulic support to an adjoining well. So if you drain a, you drain a, a stream or a, or a wetland, that just might be supporting somebody's well right there. So those are, those are three, you know, three big reasons.
Hopbrook runs through my house, it probably supplies my well.
Probably does. Yeah, and, you know, it probably does. And that's a beautiful wetland back there, it's really, really, really nice. A lot of people have kind of pushed their yards, you know, kind of into it, but that's a beautiful wetland back there, really is nice.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Anybody else?
Anybody else? Thank you, Terry.
Well, you're very, I said, you're very welcome.
That was awesome.
Yeah, you're very welcome. I'd probably just add one other thing. I said, defining wetlands is, can be a little bit of a challenge. Some people, they've built recently, probably have a survey map that...
Shows it.
That shows it, you know, for some reason, whatever, it was a soil scientist out there and wetlands got flagged.
My plot plan has all the wetlands marked on it.
Yeah, and that's a really nice feature. A lot of people don't.
We've had a couple that have it marked on it and I see like upland review and I'm like, what's upland review?
Yeah, well, that's what it is. That's what we would look for. We would look for all the wetlands flagging and then align seventy-five feet or a hundred or two hundred feet off the wetlands, you know, off that wetlands flag. And that's where the commission has a purview, you know. The state gives you some wiggle room too. If some reason there's a slope, I mean, the numbers go a little bit higher, you know, five percent slope would add.
Yeah, my property is bisected by it because the drainage from the houses above me go through there. And when it runs through my property, my property is not as steep in that area as the areas above, so it tends to hold the water a little longer.
Right.
Which is probably why the soil type was different there.
Could be.
I mean, it dries out in the summer, there's nothing, nothing there. It's not moist at all.
Yeah, that gets me, I'm going to, one other thing. So there are GIS maps that the state provides.
Yeah, we look at them all the time.
Yeah, I will tell you, they are directionally correct. They're not accurate.
Oh, so when you put in the flood plan and all the other stuff on there, it's close?
It's close. So we've had some people, you know, come into the land use commission, they have a home, they don't have what you have, which is the wetlands flagged. So the property owner, they have a choice. They can either use the state map, which says, here's where it is, or they can get a contract with a soil scientist and have them come out. So I said, they're directionally correct, they give you a good idea, but if you really want to know, and we've had a couple of them where the GIS map showed it was wetlands, the guy had a soil scientist come out and it wasn't. The wetlands was a little further back. We had one that was a little further forward. So I, I offer you that. And drainage off town roads or off state roads is a real challenge, you know, because they're not designed very well.
Ours is driveway. It's just the hill.
Yeah.
Was that way. And the way, I live on Christian Lane, so...
Oh, right.
I, I own part of Merwin's Brook.
Okay, great, right. Oh, yeah, and you got the big hill that comes off.
I got the big hill that comes down and the way they did the properties there, they, we all have fifty-foot rightaways going down.
Yeah.
So it's not a town road going up, it's just a shared driveway.
Right.
But they decided when they did that, they put a culvert in and ran the water across my property.
Right, well, that says, those are always challenges for us too. Because unfortunately, most, when the town put them in, they just put a culvert in and it just go, it just dies.
It just bums.
You know, and, and now a lot of people had created wetlands there because of the drainage, you know, the drainage has been funneled. Used to just sheet flow over the whole area, you know, into the creek, but now it's been channeled, so now there's...
That's where my property is.
Yeah, and people get surprised and it's, it can be a big expense for them sometimes.
Well, I didn't build the house, I bought it that way, so I knew it when I bought it.
I have one final, I just want to ask your opinion on something. When you're looking at things in general that come from a wetlands, do you consider wetlands to be a feature of the property or a hardship on the property? Or it's just something that Mother Nature put there?
Yeah, well, we certainly don't think of it as a hardship because I think they're cool. They're cool. Wetlands are cool, yeah. You see animals that you don't see, it supports your well, it's, it is an asset.
And they're there before anything else was.
They were there before anybody else. I think of them as an asset. Are they a feature of the property of a lot of the animals?
It's an asset.
Yeah, it's an asset.
Feature.
And we try and convey that to people, it was an asset.
Thank you.
Have that.
Thank you very, very much.
Very welcome. I said, if I can do anything else...
See, I feel, I'm going to clap. That was probably all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we have, because sometimes a lot of what we, you know, we talk about, if you can see in the paper, like people, share this one with you, I think about dead trees. A lot of people want to go and take the trees out, you know, and they say they're an eyesore. Well, that tree drew all the nutrition in the soil right there. If you take that tree out, you're now taking all the carbon, all the nitrogen, all the phosphorus, all the minerals that created that tree out of that soil. So you want something else to grow there? It won't have the nutrition.